It is seven o'clock.
Yay.
Let's get this meeting started. Okay, I'm Libby Lewicki, I'm Secretary of the School Committee and Chair of the Community Outreach Subcommittee. This is a Community Outreach Subcommittee meeting with the participation of the full school committee. I will call the Subcommittee meeting to order at 7:01 PM. And, uh, Committee Chair Carrie Nie, would you like to call the full school committee to order, please?
Thank you, Libby, and thank you everyone for coming tonight. Um, I will call the full school committee to order at 7:01, and I'm just gonna take a roll call so, um, to check for the minutes who's here and also some members of the public and see the members of the school committee. Uh, so Michelle Eyre?
Yeah.
Jen Benham?
Yeah.
Ness Correnti?
Yeah.
Uh, Carlos De Silva called in earlier, he's on the line. Um, Libby Lewicki just was here, and then Liza O'Reilly was at our two earlier forums, but she's on the Master Plan Committee for the town, so she's not on here tonight. So, thank you, Libby.
Thank you. All right. Hello, everybody, and thank you for coming. I have a quick comment I need to read. This meeting... Thank you. "This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If you, if any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law 30A20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording." Is anybody recording this call? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to continue on.
You look like someone's recording, that matters.
Somebody's recording?
My screen.
Other than Harvard Media? Is anybody recording this call?
Libby, that's me, that's recording Julie.
Oh, okay, thanks. All right. The three-hour-long forums, the three-hour-long forums being held today are for all of us to hear from more from Superintendent Dr. Austin about the school reopening draft plan. These forums are also for the school committee to hear comments and questions from the community as we prepare for our meeting tomorrow night, during which we vote to vote on a plan. The forums are being recorded by Harvard Media and will be made available for public viewing. The slides that Dr. Austin is presenting were emailed to all families and posted on the Hingham Public Schools webpage today. We will also be sharing a frequently asked question document once the learning model is approved by the school committee. Dr. Austin will start with an overview of the updated draft plan that will answer a lot of questions. We received hundreds of questions over the past few days and grouped them by theme. He will address most of the themes and provide a lot of answers. But we do request your patience as we do not have all of the answers at this time. If after Dr. Austin finishes his presentation, you wish to ask a question, please raise your hands with the raise hands button, and I will call on you as time permits. Please state your name and address. There is a one-question limit and a two-minute limit per person, and I will be timing. Please have your video on while you speak, as this is helpful to those with assistive hearing technologies. And please remember to mute yourself at the speaking. If we do not have time to get to your questions, or even if we do, please come to the school committee meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, come to the school committee meeting on August 10th at 7:00 PM, and come to the coffee with the superintendent on August 13th at 9:00 AM. And of course, you can always mail us. Dr. Austin, I proudly pass the mic to you. Take it away.
Thank you so much, everyone, and since this is our third, and it's gonna feel like third-hour meeting, three-hour meeting, uh, I may get hoarse, and so if I really lose my voice, I'll just let somebody else take over for a while. Um, but tonight I'm gonna do a couple things. I wanna, I'm gonna start with a written statement that I have, um, that I think is very important to, to share with you, uh, just some of this experience. I'm also gonna run through a fairly lengthy, um, slide presentation, uh, and it'll take, it'll take a good part of thirty minutes, and I, and I do apologize for that, but it also answers a lot of the questions that people have asked. Uh, and the third thing I would say is that we are about ready to, um, if you have not received it already, and I don't think you have, um, but later tonight you'll receive a copy, a draft copy, of our final report, and that is a draft. Please recognize it is a draft. There may be typos in it, there may be spaces, there may be, uh, language misuse, but, uh, it is a, a large document that you will get tonight that I think will answer a lot more questions for you. Um, so, with that, without further ado, I wanna read the statement I have. "So I want to open this evening by thanking all of you for attending this meeting today. Robust and healthy debate is needed in times like this, and we should welcome different opinions. For if we listen carefully to one another, it will be these differing opinions that will encourage us to think differently and openly, and to hopefully bring us to the best possible solutions. Over the course of the past few days, I've seen the best and worst of people of Hingham. Since Friday evening, I have received literally hundreds of emails, ranging from very thoughtful ideas and opinion to the more unfounded accusations and unfortunately name-calling. I read each one, even the ones that flooded my inbox minute after minute, hour after hour, with only the names changed in the text. A common thread I heard in all of them was the request for me and Hingham Public Schools to quote-unquote 'do better.' I take that to heart, and I can assure you that I will always strive to do better. But I ask the same from all of you. This is no time to blame teachers, administrators, government officials, me, or parents. We have exceptional staff, teachers and administrators in Hingham who are fiercely dedicated to the students, and I stand proudly by each of them as we navigate these incredibly difficult waters. We also have wonderful parents and community people who are absolutely and fiercely dedicated to students as well, and we are proud to serve you. Many districts, and there will be many more, have already concluded that there is just no way to open schools to students in the fall. But I want to assure you, I believe if there is any district that can bring students back to school in the fall, it will be us here at Hingham Public Schools. But to do so, we must come together with grace and patience. This past weekend, we were dangerously close to canceling graduation after several reported public events Thursday night in which students and adults were seen not masked or socially distanced. High school principal Rick Swanson and I spent many hours Friday night and late into the night on Friday, and many hours on Saturday working with public health officials at both local level and state level before finally getting the green light to continue with the ceremony Saturday night. Please, we need to all work together. Follow the CDC and Massachusetts Department of Health guidelines in order to have the best chance for return to in-person learning. We must do this together. Folks, I work with so many people, we have incredible educators, and they are fearful of coming back into the classroom. They hear things such as reasonable risk, and someday, maybe somebody will explain to me what a reasonable risk is. But they hear these things, and yet we see our people not taking this serious. Our staff have lost parents, they've lost siblings, they've lost loved ones. And there is nothing more in the world than they want to do than walk into these classrooms again, but we must do it safely. On Thursday night, I will provide the school committee with the three options for opening schools in the fall. These options are fully remote, fully open, or a hybrid model, which is a combination of open and remote. Since May, more than one hundred people have met for countless hours, engaging in thoughtful conversation and poring over guidance as it arrived, and it arrived as little as last week, or as late as last week. I don't believe that there are any ideas that have been brought by the community that they have not considered carefully and debated thoughtfully. The majority of these people did this work unpaid and on their own time. We had, I believe, over thirty-five or forty teachers, administrators who have not had a break for a very long time, all working day after day for countless off-hours. I want to personally thank them for their time and effort, but unfortunately, they know that their work is not done. I think we all know and accept that it's all hands-on deck until the opening of schools. And on Thursday night, I will recommend the plan that these hard-working individuals recommended to me, a hybrid phased-in reopening. But I caution all of you to understand that this is not likely our final plan. We must be flexible as we continue to determine how best to move forward. As new guidance arrives, we will have to adjust. You have my word that when that happens, I will communicate with all of you to keep you informed. I wish that I could give you absolutes tonight, I cannot. If you demand absolutes from me tonight, then I can only absolutely guarantee that we would have to say we will be going remote. That is not what we want to do. We need to keep working through this process. So today I'm gonna give you another preview of the extensive work that has been done, but by the end of the day, as I've already said, our full draft of the report will be released. Please expect approximately seventy pages, and I believe it's actually sixty-eight, of detailed work and consideration in the final draft. Please, remember it is still a draft and may need more work. We will continually rework this document that is due to DESI on the tenth of August. And I will also caution you, even if it's due on the tenth of August, doesn't mean that on the eleventh, it doesn't change. We cannot get ourselves into a corner and say this is exactly what we're going to do, because conditions are constantly changing. We, as a staff, are absolutely dedicated to the flexibility of being able to move in and out as we need to, to best move ours, best move our students forward. We're still evolving, and we'll continue to evolve right up to our start date of September sixteenth.
Yeah.
And, uh, Jessica, there you go, thank you, Jessica. So now we're gonna move into, thank you for listening to that for a moment, we're gonna move right into the slideshow. And these have been posted for a while, I hope you've seen them, so the agenda, I'm gonna do a little bit of the work of what the Facility Subcommittee talked about, which is feasibility study, um, and then capacity considerations, PPE, et cetera. Talk a little bit about the Instructional Subcommittee, um, which is the instructional model and the Learn From Anywhere concept developed by Dr. Lewawa, um, and talk a little bit about phased-in reentry, and the Special Education Subcommittee, which is provision of services, level of student need, et cetera. Uh, and one thing I didn't do, I haven't done the last two meetings, I, I, we're not going over what the Communication Subcommittee has done. Uh, they've also been an essential part of getting those messages out to you every week. I'm so proud of the work they've done and appreciative, so, uh, although I don't bring them up in the slides, I wanna make sure I don't forget them. So the first thing we'll talk about is feasibility, this is what everybody, whoop, there we go, thank you. Uh, in the feasibility, we measured all of our classrooms and non-instructional spaces across the district. We measured the distance between occupancy and classroom counts, and what's realistic and what isn't. Measurements assume that everything is out of the room except for desks or tables. Folks, I have to tell you, this is gonna look very different for your students as they walk into the classroom. They will be shocked. There is, there are no more bookshelves, there are no more furniture pieces. All the warm things of home are gone. It's going to be a fairly, um, sterile environment, um, so that we can maximize the amount of space that we have for students. Some of our non-instructional spaces are simply not practical for learning purposes. And, one of the things you'll hear, and I've heard this many times, about bringing all students back to school, and that would be in a minimum of three-foot distance. If we did that, many of our spaces have to be retrofitted. We would have to look at outdoor space, we'd have to look at indoor space, auditoriums, cafeterias, gymnasiums, et cetera, and re, re, um, fit those to, to be able to be classrooms. Now that said, we simply don't have enough staff because we would have overflow of students. If we were gonna do a full return to school, we will need approximately seventy-two full-time equivalent teachers in order to make that happen. Now, I've talked a little bit about it, I don't have this, uh, earlier today, and I don't have a slide for this, but seventy-two teachers would cost us somewhere in the excess of five million dollars, and that's before we get into any construction, purchasing modules, uh, modular, um, buildings, purchasing bubbles, tents, et cetera. We're talking five to six million dollars. Now, I'm gonna caution that I'm not gonna recommend a full, I've already said that we're gonna recommend a hybrid. I cannot recommend in good conscience to spend, even if we had the money, the five to six million, because we could get to September sixteenth, and the governor could say, "We're going remote." And if we've done that, we still owe those teachers, we've still spent the money, and we can't recoup that. So if you see on the slides, you can see the approximate enrollment for each building, the number of, of students we could fit in six-foot distancing, for example, at the high school, we have an enrollment of about fourteen hundred students. We can fit at six-foot spacing, eight-hundred-and-fifty-two students, if we used all of our spaces. And that included, and this is just six-foot, if we put them in, in the gymnasium and we left six feet apart, so obviously we know that's not practical, but we could put about twelve hundred students in the high school. That is not gonna work, and it's simply not gonna work. At the middle school, we can fit eight-hundred-and-sixty-six out of a thousand, so a little better than eighty percent of the entire enrollment. At three feet, it's, we can fit twelve-hundred-and-seventy. Now again, that is all of our students. But I will say again, this is not allowing for any space in the classroom, any movement, uh, and we have problems that, for such as things as lunch, snack, mask breaks, which all have to be over six-foot spacing. So for all practical purposes, we need to provide an environment that allows for up to six feet of spacing to maximize safety and allow children the best opportunity to take off their mask if they need to, to breathe, and to have the right space. At East, we can fit three-hundred-and-thirty-nine students at six feet, and six-hundred-and-twenty-nine at three. So we could, but again, it gets very crowded. Foster, five-hundred. And at the classroom level of three feet, just about a little over five-hundred-and-twenty-eight. I will also say that at Foster, we have eight classrooms, which we call Down the Middle, that do not have windows and do not have the kind of ventilation that I feel comfortable putting kids in. So therefore, we've lost eight classrooms at Foster. So while the space says that we can do that, there's absolutely no way to bring them in at three feet. PRS, we have for enrollment of four-hundred-and-fifty, PRS would be very close again and could potentially, uh, have, uh, all the children at, uh, three-foot distance. South School has five-hundred-and-twenty-fives, which is our largest enrollment for elementary, uh, and at three feet, we can only fit four-hundred-and-ninety-one, so South would not work at all in three feet. So capacity considerations, first and foremost, number one priority is safety of students and staff. No question, we have to maintain that. Not all spaces are appropriate for teaching and learning, as I've said. The classroom management consideration is that teachers have limited movement around the room while maintaining appropriate distancing. Lunch or mask break considerations have to have at least six foot of minimum for them to take off their mask. Students can't eat or have mask breaks in rooms at three feet, period. New England weather also poses challenges for outdoor spaces. Outdoor lunch, mask breaks not always a practical, and our ability to procure module classrooms, if we could get them, bubbles, tents, et cetera, take time and funds that we simply do not have, uh, and there are also chain concerns. Um, so, so getting those things, supply chain concerns. Additional cleaning also takes time and funds. So the conclusions, current HBS facilities and spaces are not designed to accommodate a full capacity under these required restrictions. I was interestingly looking at the yearbook this weekend, and when you see classrooms, you see children face-to-face, near each other all the time. Even every classroom, it's back-to-back, or side-to-side, or front-to-front, however they're, they're configured, they're very close. We will not look like that, and we cannot look like that this fall. It's going to be very different. Our budget austerity measures, we have long-term financial considerations. To put it bluntly, we are really in, in front of a very deep fiscal cliff coming up. We, by the generosity of all of you as taxpayers in this district, uh, and the town, we are gonna be okay this fiscal year, but we are under austerity measures to make that work. We are, we are, um, strictly looking at every single purchase we make right now, and the focus that we have is on safety measures and everything to get our students back to school. That is where the bulk of our money is going. We have time-intensive and costly to procure and/or retrofit non-instructional spaces. With only six weeks left to go, there is no time, and even if we had ten or twelve, we could not build new spaces that quickly. Time-intensive and it's costly to hire, train, and supervise additional teachers with greater than seventy-two FTEs to staff additional classrooms. In light of the physical distancing and other pandemic measures impacting instruction and best practices, we had to ask ourselves, do the full capacity under current conditions best serve the academic and social needs of our students? The answer is a resounding no from our principals and our teachers and our staff. I trust them. You should be able to trust them as well. We don't want to put our students in any situation that is unhealthy for them, either physically or emotionally. There are practical considerations of delayed and evolving guidance. Guidance is coming to us regularly, and we have to continue to evolve because of it. I simply don't know what tomorrow's gonna look like, and even the Commissioner of Education recently told us that the plan we submit on August tenth is incredibly likely to be very different two weeks later, based upon new guidance. So personal protective equipment, many questions around that. We have over, we've already spent over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on PPE and disinfecting products that we've purchased. We have masks and face shields for various purposes. We have regular masks, we have clear masks for teachers, and we have N95s. We have over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand masks in stock right now and ready to go. We have hand sanitizer, bottles and stations in all of our buildings, and we have plenty of supplies. We have gloves, gowns, plexiglan, uh, germ barriers, cleaning electrostatic disinfecting misters, chemicals and other disinfecters, and all the other things that we do to clean our buildings. Our facilities, uh, folks, have done an amazing job, uh, at procuring the, the necessary equipment to open schools. And our cleaning protocols are being set now with daily cleaning disinfecting protocols, emergency cleaning disinfecting protocols as well, laundry protocols, cleaning protocols for buses, et cetera. So for transportation, we currently operate twenty-four full-size buses of seventy-two passengers. I said in a recent, uh, communication to all of you that our ability to transport students is reduced by approximately seventy percent. We do provide regular transportation, or we will, uh, would have, provided regular transportation to Hingham students, including private schools. We provide two daily buses for Boston runs, uh, and for the Metco program. Special education, other transportation services are also provided by Hingham as well as by outside contractors. We have ten vans, we also plan to buy two more. We may need to consider, given the fact that we are seventy percent reduced in our capacity, that we may need to revise bus policy and do the absolute minimum as required by the state, which is guarantee, um, transportation for students in K through six who live over two miles from your school. All students must wear masks on the desk, and buses need to be disinfected between runs and at the end of each day. Developing plan, we are developing plans to provide monitors for the first couple of weeks at least to ensure that mask-wearing and appropriate behavior is always followed on the bus. For our buildings and ventilations, more questions that came to me. We are cleaning all of our duct works and changing out our filters to higher levels as appropriate for the equipment. We are implementing in all purge systems to purge all of the air in the buildings and replace it with fresh air, useful for, most useful for late fall and winter. We have opened up our dampers one-hundred percent until weather requires a reduction, so when it gets cold, we can't do that anymore. Essentially, this brings in fresh air and ejects the old air. When the weather requires the dampers to close, we have some recirculated air, or some recirculated air will pass through the higher-density filters, and it will return to the building once, once that's filtered out. Portable air conditioning units have been purchased, uh, as so far for some rooms, and air purifiers have been purchased for isolated areas that may be without more appropriate ventilation. So the facilities work in progress right now, we are working on building management, um, to enable the flow of our students. We're labeling lanes and one-way flows, we're limiting personal belongings that children can bring. There will be no use of lockers, there will be no sharing of equipment or materials. We will provide bathroom and mask breaks to students. But as I said, the classroom will be very different. Students will be seated six feet apart, they have to be spaced all facing forward, they will not be able to move around the room as they have done in the past. The teacher will not be able to circulate. As I said again, and I can't stress enough, it will be very different. We are putting health management protocols in place, and thankful to our nurses who have worked much of the summer, working with the Department of Public Health, notifying families and contact tracing, and getting training for that. So contact tracing will be a part of our, our, uh, school protocol, and our nurses will be heading that up. Now, you've heard a little bit about instructional model, our Learn From Anywhere model that Dr. Lewawa, uh, created with his team of education folks. This combines the in-person, hybrid, and remote models, ensures that all of our students have access to our rigorous, rigorous curriculum, and ensures the students not returning to school are fully engaged in the district's academic program. What this really is, is that we have the same instruction, the same model, the same, regardless if you're home, or if you're in class, or if you're a combination of both. So this is our phased-in reentry plan, quickly to say pre-opening phase begins on August seventeen. That's the administration and the support staff are going to return. Reopening Phase Two begins on August twenty-sixth. That's when our faculty and support staff return for training and professional development. And then, Phase One, September sixteen. We are going to begin remote instruction for all grades K to, K to twelve. In-person instruction will be for highly, uh, for specified high-need students that we're gonna call in Cohort A B. In-person activities, such as orientation for kindergarten, grade six in particular, and nine, will be given in individual and small groups from both Cohorts A and B. So students will get the opportunity to come in during that time, so these are the eight weeks, September sixteen through the twenty-eighth. So these are the eight days, uh, leading up to the twenty-eighth. We'll be working with students both remotely and in-person to, to help them understand the protocols needed, the requirements at school, re-engaging in school and lessons, and beginning the instructional process. It is our intent, and this is what we have promised to do, we will deliver a full curriculum regardless if we're remote or if we're in-person. It will be the same. We are hoping to move to Phase Two on November twen, I mean, uh, September twenty-eighth, which will based on, which we will base on health benchmarking criteria that we will establish in collaboration with the Hingham Department of Public Health, uh, consistent with guidance from CDC and the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That guidance has not come in yet, so I simply do not have the answer, but I would assume it'll be something, uh, in the effect of anything below five percent, um, and it may be, I'm, I'm giving you off the top of my head, um, somewhere about five percent of positive, uh, test results, um, when, when testing for COVID. In, on the twenty-eighth, we begin hybrid instruction for Cohorts A and B. These cohorts will alternate between in-person and remote instruction for half weeks, um, with Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday will be a full cleaning day, so that we clean all the desks so we can bring another, uh, group in, uh, and everything gets wiped down, fully cleaned, deep cleaned. Uh, and then fully remote instruction for Wednesday will occur, uh, at home. We will expect six-foot distancing. Remote instruction for Cohort R, this is reflecting fully remote students, so those students that are not coming back to school, uh, and it is an option. As a parent, you have every right and an option to say that you will be full remote, and we will be prepared on day one to deliver you a full remote plan. In-person instruction for specified high-needs children, uh, students in Cohort A B, uh, will continue, that is five days a week, um, throughout the day. And three, um, which I said two cohorts, full day, three-foot distancing, which is really dependent upon spacing and staffing, uh, and, and we can move in and out of these things. If we're able to, if we're able to increase time, if we're able to increase students, we will do that. So please do not hold us to these, this is when next phase starts, if we can do it earlier, we will. It is our promise to you that we will bring students in as quickly as possible, for as long as feasibly possible as well. And finally, Phase Four, uh, is decided by the Governor and Commissioner that we have a full return to pre-COVID, no restrictions. So the Learn From Anywhere model is including, is web-based instruction, which is remote students attend live classes. So the Learn From Anywhere model is including is web-based instruction, which is remote students attend live classes, live classes. Streaming video conferencing for conferences, small group work over Zoom. Face-to-face classroom time, which is live, in-person teaching to schools and then distance learning for videos, television, audio recordings, et cetera. Children will be required, all students will be required to attend. There is nothing optional, just like any school day. And all things will be graded as you are used to grading, uh, in, in person and we've done in the past. So the remote learning for twenty-twenty, the mode of instruction will be synchronous learning and live instruction. It will be supported by asynchronous learning activities. And just like anyone in any classroom, if you have an hour-long class, no teacher stands in lectures for a half, for an hour. They may do it for a half hour. They may do a half hour of instruction and then it's followed through with asynchronous activities where students are working independently. That is true for home, that is true in hybrid, that is true for in-person. So asynchronous learning activities will support both home and in-person learning. We will have consistent, uh, consistent platforms for learning. CSOL will be a pre-K and then all students in K through twelve will use Google Classroom, Microsoft Teams. For student technology, all students in K-one will require an iPad. And all students in grades two through twelve will need either a Chromebook or laptop. The district does not have enough equipment to do one-to-one computing for every single student. We would ask if your student has an iPad at K-one or for students in two through twelve that has the ability for a Chromebook or has a laptop, we ask you if you have the ability to do that, please provide that for them. If you need assistance in any way, the district will provide that for you. We have many hundreds of Chromebooks available, which we used in the fall. And if students are already having Chromebooks for the middle schools, et cetera, they may keep theirs and they will take that with them to high school from eighth grade to ninth grade. All others, we have over seven-hundred Chromebooks on order. They are backordered, uh, which is not surprising, given the conditions and the, uh, the demand. We hope to have them before the start of school, but please be aware that may be longer and we do project it may well be longer. For teachers, teachers will have iPads. They will have a microphone so they can do live-stream education. We will have webcams for hybrid. So what will happen is if your student is in A and you're live, your cohort B will be remote, but they will be remoting into the classroom under live-stream conditions. So we'll have a webcam in the classroom so that students at home can see the students in the classroom uh, and that they can be monitored by the teacher in the classroom as well. So they can participate either from home or in-person the same way. So this is a sample hybrid remote schedule. So in-person, for example, at the elementary level, we arrive at eight-ten. At eight-thirty, they have class meetings and attendance was taken. At eight-forty-five through nine-forty-five, they do an instructional block. Nine-forty-five is a movement, music, um, mask break, snack. At ten-oh-five and eleven-oh-five, we have instructional block. Eleven-oh-five to eleven-twenty-five, we have another movement, mask break. Eleven-twenty-five to twelve-fifteen is an instructional block. Twelve-fifteen to twelve-thirty is dismissal. We sanitize, we preview, uh, remote assignments and expectations. Excuse me. Uh, students will be transported home. Our travel home from twelve-thirty to one. At home, we expect they'll have lunch and then by one-thirty, they'll be back in asynchronous. So they'll be online, so all students will join us online at one-thirty for asynchronous specialist time. This could be music, art, biz ed, uh, et cetera. And then at two o'clock, the teacher will have assigned remote activities for them to end their day. In the remote sample suggested, eight-thirty, they have a class meeting, so they will join their classmates in the other cohort. Eight-forty-five, they'll join their classmates and instruct- uh classmates in instructional blocks. A break at nine-forty-five, ten, they're back into synchronous specialist classes. Again, that could be a specialist, that could be reading, that could be math, it could be anything with specialists. At ten-thirty, it's an instructional block of both synchronous and asynchronous instruction. At ten, uh, eleven-thirty, all right, we have a break for movement. Eleven-forty-five, we hope they'll have lunch. And at twelve-thirty to one-thirty, back into an instructional block again, uh, with synchronous and asynchronous instruction. Uh, and one-thirty with a break in movement and then at one-forty-five, they have their last instructional block of the day. So as you can see, a very different schedule. We've heard many comments, it can't be like the spring. Well, this is nothing like the spring. This is a very full and robust, as we've been promising, remote pro- program of live instruction, supported by asynchronous or non-live instruction. Here's the middle school sample program. We have six periods throughout the day. We are basing this on a half-hour schedule each. Um, we will start at seven-thirty. Um, and for Period One, Period Two will start at eight-ten, so it gives ten minutes for, for movement within the school. In Period C, three block will be eight-fifty, nine-twenty. D is nine-forty to ten-ten. E, ten-twenty to eleven-ten, uh, ten-fifty. F, eleven to eleven-thirty and eleven-thirty, we'll dismiss our students after four hours. When they go home, we expect they'll have their lunch and then back into remote specials, music, PE, et cetera, to end their day, to make it a full day. The secondary level, we've broken down into block scheduling. This is something you see in many high schools across the, across the Commonwealth, particularly during this, uh, scenario. We have blocked down, most children, uh, most students take seven classes, uh, per semester. So Class One, Two and Three will happen on Monday in person, starting at eight and ending a little after twelve. Students will, um, go home on each day after the twelve-oh-five and at one to two-fifteen, they'll take an elective. These are non-masked electives. Again, this is something the student, uh, wants to take, could be music, band, um, you know, lessons or, um, some other class, art, photography, uh, those kind of things they can do at home and unmasked. And then at two-fifteen to two-forty-five each day, we anticipate we would have, um, a, a time where we'd have office hours with our teachers, uh, working with students who need extra help, et cetera. On the Tuesdays, so that's Monday, one, two, three, Tuesday would be four, five, six, with seven being elective and then of course at the end of the day, the extra help. While Cohort A is in school, Cohort B is remote into that classroom. So they will be live, joining their classmates, taking the same class. On Wednesday, our schedule changes a little bit, where we start at eight o'clock, but then we run through all six classes on a half-hour schedule throughout the day. So they will be together, remote together, from home or wherever they are, remoting into the class. And again, attendance is not optional. It's expected of all students. Uh, and there will be high standards for work and it will be graded as all graded, whether in-person or remote. So the hyro- uh, hybrid cohort instruction, we plan to do geographic area and bus routes. So to the extent possible, we're going to go to geographic areas, so you will come to school by neighborhoods. And cohort names will be A and B, um, for generally half of the population each. We do have Group A-B, which are students who attend in-person learning along with independent of Group A or B. And Group R, which is the students who are remote only. I will caution you that the high school cohort has great complexity because we have over thirteen-hundred students with different schedules. To the extent possible, we will try to keep students in their neighborhood. That is not a guarantee though, for some, if their schedules differ greatly. But we've heard from a lot of parents and I heard one after our last time, that they simply cannot be separated. Our folks will work with you as families to the best of our ability so that none of this is a hardship where we, we reduce the hardship to the extent possible. So the, the phased-in reentry, which I've already discussed, the timing, we begin pre-entry one, August seventeen. We expect everyone to be six feet, mask worn and, and, um, for all district facilities, contact tracing will be in place, uh, and then we'll have consistent cleaning routines, et cetera. For reopening Phase Two, we begin Aug- August twenty-sixth. We have a new teacher orientation. We bring our teaching faculty and support staff to return. We have convocation, which I don't know what it looks like yet. Um, we're certainly not going to be all in the auditorium as we were. Uh, opening faculty meetings, district professional development programming planning and prep. Phase One, beginning on September sixteen. We're going to have a remote for remote instruction for all kids, uh, grades K to twelve, for A, B and R. In-person opening for Cohort A-B, so they will be in school, uh, for a full day, beginning on the sixteen. And we will also have individual and small groups from both A and B that will be attending, uh, based on the schedule the teachers, uh, send you. Our model is Learn From Anywhere, so regardless of where you are. And it'll teach the kids very quickly what the routine is, so we can transfer those students into school quickly and they'll be right on target of where they should be. All students will be six feet apart and masks must be worn by all students in K-12, uh, throughout the district. We will have contact tracing practices in the event that we do have an infection that happens in school and we'll have consistent routine hand washing routines, expectations for all students. Phase Two will begin, uh, hopefully, uh, September twenty-eight, uh, depending on a health metric that's not designed yet. It'll be a fifty percent capacity. Students will remain in their cohorts for a reduced day. Uh, for example, our eight to twelve, seven-thirty to eleven-thirty for middle school. Uh, and it will be a little bit different. The height, the, the elementary schools may have to stagger as they do now to ensure we can bus appropriately. Our model is Learn From Anywhere. We will continue our core content delivery. Our intervention groups will form at that time and we'll have social distancing of six feet, mask, contact tracing, et cetera. Phase Three, depending upon, um, our resources, et cetera, we will move to, uh, a full day with everyone in and that will be the three days, five days per week, I mean, a three, three-foot distancing, sorry, uh, five days per week. Uh, it is the Learn From Anywhere model. Um, we will continue to make ongoing adjustments. Also, folks, there may be another, um, phase in here as well, um, where we start with a, uh, a reduced day. If we're able to make that a full day and make that work, um, that will be in between and so that could happen at any time. Um, we'll certainly keep you informed if that's what our thinking is. But if we can get them in slower to start and that's very successful and students do well in that and we think we can, um, increase the day, um, we can do that safely, we will probably try to do that. And Phase, uh, Phase Three Resources, as I said, there are resources we would need in order to go to Phase Three. That is everyone in schools at three feet. We would need twenty-four classroom teachers, uh, twenty special education, that's at the elementary level, twenty special education teachers, five full-time speech therapists and one occupational therapist. At the middle school, we'd need an additional five-point-six classroom teachers. At the high school, ten new teachers. We would have to provide additional space for the cafeteria. We'd have spaces in the music, chorus, PE rooms, et cetera, and classroom and therapy, uh, spaces. We need approximately sixty-six to make that safe. Our new middle school and high school schedules, logistically, are very difficult and they're continually weren't working through those. And in Phase Four, that we're all very much looking forward to, when the Governor tells us that it is safe now to go to pre-COVID, open everything as it was before, um, March thirteenth, twenty-twenty. I know we're all looking forward to that and we're all working very hard to get there. Special education and other provision of services for our preschool students will be instructed in-person at the East Integrated Preschool. The community peers will be included when there is confidence that we can execute that safely. Students in substantially separate programs such as Rise and CLC will attend school in-person, full days, five days a week. Most other students requiring specialized support services will participate in general education instruction in the morning. They will stay for lunch. If you have an IEP student, they will stay for lunch and they will receive their specialized instruction in the afternoon. Those schedules will be individualized and shared with families as soon as possible. Finally, this is the level of student need and I'm gonna, I, I put this on the internet. I will certainly, uh, you can read that at your own leisure. But this is how we, we are, um, leveling our students for need. Um, these are students that are already identified as high-needs through the IEP process. These are students who cannot engage in remote learning due to their disability-related needs. These are students who primarily use aided and augmentative communication. Students who are homeless, students in foster care or congregate care and/or students who are duly identified as special ed and a special education and English learners. Other special considerations, teams will continue to make individual determinations for the delivery of instruction, especially in these unique circumstances where students are unable to access remote instruction due to disability-related factors. Examples include students with emotional disabilities who are unable to access remote instruction independent of specialized instruction. Students with high-risk medical conditions who require an individual and, um, individualized plan for services. Students who are homeless or in foster care. Students who use augmentative communication and students who are eligible for both English language and special education services. One of the things that I would say, I know there's a lot of questions around Metco. Our Metco students, actually, we've received more students this year than we had last year. We've increased and we anticipate that they will be coming in their cohorts A-B, but they will be staying for a full day um, for transportation reasons and to support them, uh, in their learning, uh, programs. Thank you for listening. I know that was a long, a lot of information, uh, but hopefully, hopefully answering a lot of the questions that you'd had so far. I can stop talking because I'm not sure I can talk much more, Libby.
All right, Justin, I am admiring your stamina. Are you ready for some questions?
I am absolutely ready to go.
Okay, let's do this. Uh, I, so we remind you to please raise your hand with the raise your hand button. I'm following you in order. There, receive. We have one question and two minutes as a limit. And I, um, will speak how long we can keep this meeting going, but I would like for our, uh, superintendent to get a good night's sleep tonight.
Okay, I'll be here as long as you need me.
I am seeing, uh, Joshua Demasi. Please, Joshua, answer our question.
Hope you're muted, Joshua. So I agree with everything you said.
Josh, Josh Demasi, Longmont Road, um, a couple of, a couple of questions. Um, so you talked about contact tracing. Do we have any idea about how, uh, rapid the tests are going to be? Because if the test might take fifteen days and contact tracing, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, well, that is a huge concern of mine as well, Joshua, and I appreciate you bringing that up. I mean, I, I did hear today, like everybody else, that Commonwealth is looking at doing rapid testing and purchasing lots of tests. But you are correct. No matter how good we are, we could have a student that is infected and we wouldn't know for weeks. Uh, and that is problematic. It's one of my concerns. It's one of, I know, the teachers' concerns, uh, as we go. And, and I'm pretty positive that a lot of districts have said, we're going to go remote because they can't fix that problem. Uh, so I am very aware of that.
Okay, and then just very quickly, my second question. Um, the protocol for, uh, some, you know, colleges are back in session. Somebody's dad rides the boat, uh, ends up getting COVID from whoever comes back, gets, gives COVID to their child. What's the protocol if somebody in Section A now has COVID? What happens with the teacher? What happens with the school in terms of quarantine?
So in the report that you're going to get tonight, there is a full listing of all the protocols about that. So it's, for example, it gives you different scenarios of what we're going to do. Um, but bottom line is, Sue Sarni from the Hingham, uh, Health Department, Board of Health, and I have become best of friends, uh, over the summer. Uh, we will have a lot of contact with each other. We will continue to contact. So when we have a, when we have a situation, they will know about it first. They'll inform me. We'll go through our protocols. We'll, we'll separate those students or have to quarantine those. Let them know who would have to be quarantined. Uh, but it is a nightmare scenario. Uh, and we have to, I mean, I'm going to be honest with you. That's not going to be easy. Uh, and we're going to try to figure that out as, as, um, as we get closer to the summer. So there's a lot of work that still has to be done to, to figure those out. Thanks for those questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to David Salo.
Hi there. Uh, Dave Bollier on Mattville. Um, and Doctor, thank you for your time. I know it's a, it's certainly been a long day. Um, there's, there's obviously, from, from what you've said, there's multiple things that need to happen to get even to the hybrid approach that you described. Um, obviously, the, the medical stats are one that are completely or largely beyond all of our control. Can you speak to some of the other things you've mentioned, like hiring seventy-five teachers, I believe? Um, the negotiations with current teachers. What are the big things that need to happen that are in our collective control? And what is your confidence level that those will be, uh, met, uh, whatever conditions they are in the next several weeks?
Oh, that would take me a couple of hours to answer that one, Dave. Thank you. So I'm, I'm going to go to the first one. I'm not recommending that we go into a full, uh, open and try to hire seventy-five teachers. I think we're going to be lucky to, I mean, I think we have to be really realistic. I think we're gonna be lucky to, I mean, I think we have to be really realistic. We have some teachers that aren't gonna come back as it is, who aren't able to come into our buildings because they might be high-risk or have, or live with somebody who's high-risk. Um, so there are conditions that we're gonna have to worry about right off the bat, just to have the number of teachers we need to start with in the first place. So I'm not getting, gonna go into the new, what would we do to hire seventy-five new ones? Um, because there's no way we could get that kind of money in the first place to start, so. I will go to the second part of that question, such as negotiation with the union. Um, everything we do that impacts the unions, the Unit A, which is teachers, Unit B, the, the paras, the custodians, the secretaries, the administrative assistants, everything impacts, so when that happens, we have to negotiate. I will say we are negotiating. We are in negotiations right now with Unit A. There are a lot of things that impact, the way that they deliver instruction, the hours that, they're, they're not gonna change hours. They have to work their regular day. But where that instruction happens, how that instruction happens, are all things that they have a say. I can gladly tell you that we are working collaboratively. And that is something that, you know, this year, we have, we have just done two contracts with our, 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 for, for the next three years with both Unit A and B. Those are our parent professionals and our teachers that we're able to do in a truncated Zoom way, um, and with that went very well. I anticipate and, and do have, with all my heart, believe that we're gonna get this done and, and get those things done quickly, um, where, where both teachers and the district get what they need. Uh, so we are working on that. We are dedicated to work in the hours that that's gonna take and getting that done, so we can get going and get started. Thank you for the question.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I am seeing twelve hands raised at this time. It's looking well over our hour limit. So at this point, I will say that Sarah Bryant, we are last. Um, we didn't reevaluate at that point. If, uh, Dr. Austin, we'll, we'll see. But at this point, I would like to say, uh, that we are at our limit, or well past our limit, actually, for raising hands. So moving along, Eric Gill, I was about to call him Eric Gill.
Um, hi, Dr. Austin. I teach math at the middle school. I had sent you an email a few weeks ago wondering if teachers will be able to get into their classrooms on what it's looking like, you know, Wednesday, the full remote day. If teachers will be able to get into their classrooms and use the resources that they have there, their smart boards and whiteboards, to help them give, uh, full and robust, robust instruction.
Yeah, Eric, I don't have the protocol for that yet, but I think, um, that, I, I think that's a reasonable expectation if you'd like to do that. Um, you know, again, well, that's up to work around the, the cleaning and make sure that we can do that around you. Um, and, and certainly not put you in any place if they're running the electro, electrostatic misters while you're there. Um, but we'll, we'll certainly do our best to try to support you in that, and I appreciate that. I know you guys will wanna, wanna use every resource you have and do a good job, so thank you. But we'll work the best we can to support you. Thanks, Eric.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Nina Feister, please. Nina?
Hi, fair. Thanks, Dr. Austin. I just have a quick question. My son is entering East Elementary kindergarten this year. Uh, he is on an I E P, and I just wanted to clarify, in terms of, um, the afternoon program where he would most likely be receiving his services, I'm not sure whether or not he's gonna qualify for the full day, but in the event that he is receiving the afternoon services, um, I'm just curious if that would be taking place on the same day as he would be in school on site in the mornings, or if that could change?
Well, first, I'm gonna say congratulations on a kindergarten. That's an ex, I mean, in all of the years, you're so excited for kindergarten, and now we're gonna add a little level of anxiety to your life.
A little bit.
Just a little bit for you. And I'll ask, uh, Dr. Vines to, to chime in, uh, to help me with that one, just to make sure I get it right. I don't wanna overstep that.
Hi, Nina. I'm happy to answer that question. Um, I, what we're planning for is for them to stay with their same cohort. So if they're in Cohort A and they, um, are receiving, you know, a variety of services in the afternoons, it would be with Cohort A um, to, to try to keep the cohorts together.
Great, and, um, I think, I think that's it. So is, and I know you're gonna be providing an email. I have a few other questions as well, so that'll be great.
Sure. Any, yeah, email me with any question.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nina.
Uh, Caitlin McLeod. Caitlin?
Yes, hi, thank you. Um, I just have a quick question. It's a, something I feel like we haven't really covered yet. It's a concern of mine, and I'm sure it's probably a concern for other parents too. Um, so I understand that you, obviously, we're cleaning and we're disinfecting as much as, you know, we possibly can um, when the kids are out of school and in between cohorts and whatnot. Um, so my question really is, do we know yet what is going to be used, um, for the cleaning? Um, you know, you had mentioned earlier on the earlier forum that the use of sanitizing misters, and is that something that is safe and non-toxic and free from chemicals? Or like, what, do we know what we're using, um, for that yet?
Well, Caitlin, I think you're gonna stump me on this one. We've been using, oh, I, I hope so, because we've been using electrostatic misters for a while, um, and so, um, so we'll do that. What I'm gonna do, I'm gonna ask you to, um, you wanna email Katie Hartman? Um, and she may be able to help you with, um, the answer of exactly what they use. Yeah, everything we have is, I think it's called like M S D A or whatever it is, approved, so everything we have has to be approved for the school system. We have to keep track of all that, so I have absolutely no doubt that what we're using is going to be safe, but she can give you, if you wanna know exacts, uh, she can give you what those are. Great question.
Be great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Zaki, just the four one, Zaki.
Hi, everyone. Uh, so I have a question on preschool, because my daughters go to preschool. I have one who already goes there, and the other one's supposed to go for the first time this year. And I see we haven't really addressed this or mentioned preschool at all in the communications and the slides, so just wanted to check on, on the plan for preschoolers.
Thanks so much, and I'm gonna ask Dr. Vines, because I know she's ready to go.
Uh, that's a great question. Uh, we're still working with that team to iron out all the details, um, so I'll share with you as much as I can. Um, so we are, um, certainly planning to have our students with disabilities who are receiving services through their I E Ps attend, um, as, as if, as at school were regular. Uh, I don't know if it'll look regular for them, but, um, they will be scheduled, um, just as they otherwise would have been. Uh, what we're looking at right now is, um, is making sure that by having our community peers join us, uh, that we are able to maintain the distancing and the safety measures, um, that we need to do. We're hopeful for that. We feel like we have a decent, um, number of students that, um, will allow for some of that spacing, but I have to work with that preschool team to make sure that, um, we are keeping safety, uh, at the front and center of our planning, um, so students, uh, on I E Ps will be starting. Um, and then, um, we will have more information coming about, uh, our community peers.
Thanks. Awesome.
Okay, thank you. Um, Shelley Fish, F S C H, so it's gotta be abbreviation for something. I'll just say it.
Uh, yes, uh, my name is Shelley Meach. I live on Main Street. I have a question regarding the timing to find out about exactly what's happening with the buses. I don't know if that's a complete, what we put in the slide in terms of no middle schoolers will get buses, or if you're within two. Is that a determinant factor, as well as, um, when we're gonna find out what, um, cohort we're in? Because I've already had a post for a job to try to get coverage for my kids. They can't really put themselves in the house and do all their work alone, and now I've just found out that they might not even get a ride home, so I really have to understand the hours that I'm even hiring for. Do you know when that's gonna get published?
Thanks, uh, Shelley. We're actually gonna be working on that right away. Um, we're gonna be starting to, um, work with our busing, uh, services to find out what, you know, how we can transport in neighborhoods, what that looks like, and that's gonna depend, that's gonna then set the motion for us to start giving what cohort you're in. Uh, and so we hope to begin that work very, very soon. Uh, we know that people need to know that information, uh, and I'm pretty sure that our, our principals are dedicated to get that to you as quickly as possible. We also say, as much as we said, we need, we may need to go back to, um, the, uh, reducing our, our transportation for students above sixth grade. But also, we're gonna try to hit better than that. Um, we are, are certainly gonna do better than that if we can. Um, it'll depend on how many parents are willing to bring their children to school, how many we can, I know that people are talking about coming together, et cetera. Uh, all of those things will depend, so we're gonna try to really do better than that. Um, but we have to be able to guarantee you who we can transport. Uh, and so regardless of how many people say they're gonna bring children in, we have to be able to say, we're gonna guarantee we can do this for this group of students, so that's why the policy may need to change. Um, I hope that answered that. We're, Mary Eastwood, is there anything else you wanna add to that? Are you on?
Yes, Paul, I'm here. Yes, and in answer to that question, we are starting to work right away on the cohorts and the class lists. Actually, the class lists are already made, but we have to obviously now tailor them and, and work on the cohorts. And that is probably, uh, we're hoping to, I don't know how fast we can do it, but we're gonna work as fast as we can. We've been working around the clock, and, you know, we're gonna do the best we can. I do think all of the, those mailings that you used to, that usually come out around August nineteenth or so, will be a little bit delayed, but we are gonna do the best we possibly can. We realize that you all need that information desperately, and, uh, we'd like to get it to you as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is.
Let, let, Libby, can I just jump in there too, hey, Paul? Um, what I might just say, uh, just to capture what Mary Eastwood said, uh, to that, to Shelley who just asked that question. Um, we're preparing another survey, so once everyone understands what our plan is, everyone will get a survey asking how you plan to start, so that we have an understanding of who's coming and who's, or who's coming, or who wants to come, and then who will be staying remote. Once we know who's coming, then the principals will cross-reference that list and begin to put you in cohorts. So if that's coming, probably, I'd say, Dr. Austin, in the next couple of weeks or so, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, I would say within the next week or two, we'll have that done for you, and thanks for, thanks for remembering that. I forget what I've said and what I haven't between these three, so.
Yes, thank you, Jamie. We need to know who's coming to the party before we plan it.
That's right. There's a party? Wait a minute.
Okay, um, Pickle, Pickle Three A. We have a pickle in the crowd. Oh, I see you.
Libby? Libby, can you hear me?
We can now.
Hi, Libby and Dr. Austin. Thank you very much for having this meeting. I just had a quick question. As part of the feasibility study, did you?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you say your?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Diane Denapley, sixteen Gardner Street. Thank you for this presentation. It makes so much more sense when you walk through it. Um, as part of the feasibility study, did you ensure, um, or was the bandwidth tested in each facility? So you would know when teachers are actually streaming online, you would have the technology in place by a bandwidth to ensure that that would be able to support the entire school?
Well, Diane, you, you had to ask me a tough question. I didn't. I'm gonna tell us, you're outside. I've been in my office for twelve hours and you're outside, so, and I'm getting punchy at the five a night. I'm, I'm being honest. Um, I'm gonna ask somebody who has better, uh, the technology. I don't know if you wanna jump in on that one or not.
Hi, Diane, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
You too. With this virtually. What I would say, so what, so I just referenced in the next couple of days, once the plan is out there and the community understands, uh, what the plan is, you'll get a survey. One of the questions, uh, so we feel okay, we feel pretty confident about our infrastructure, but your point, one of the questions we're gonna be asking is if families have any bandwidth or connectivity issues. Uh, and then sort of through, once we have a sense of who might have issues, they may be prioritized to be part of our A B cohort, who are coming more often, so we avoid the issue. We might be able to connect them with some resources in the community to support their Wi-Fi connectivity and the quality of their bandwidth. Uh, but, but so, uh, we feel pretty okay internally. What we're most thoughtful of in that domain is sort of what people have in their homes. And so when you get the survey, you're gonna, because, you know, most people have Wi-Fi, and I'm gonna say most, not all, most have Wi-Fi, but you probably even notice, um, with people being home so, so much more, with that many more devices all connected at the same time, you might have lagging issues or streaming issues, you might offer a lot, right? That speaks to the quality of the bandwidth or how much, um, high and obnoxious, uh, a computer technician is playing one on TV, so bear with me. But it, it sort of is how much information is allowed to flow and what's speaking out of your house. And so a lot of people experience difficulty, which we heard loud and clear on our surveys, with their own home streaming, right? So to your point, one of, one of the things we'll be targeting when we do our survey is finding out that information from folks so we can better plan and make individual contacts with people, uh, with some, either some supports or suggestions or, or ways to, um, hopefully have that be less of an issue.
But you feel confident that the Hingham Public Schools have the existing infrastructure to support a fully remote model if necessary today or soon?
We will by the, by the time we launch.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah, so we have additional, uh, routers and we have additional connectivity connection points, and I don't know if Joe's in the column, you probably speak to that more, but, um, we, but my understanding is we are preparing for a, like, uh, with, with the tech wording and technology also comes the repair and construction.
Great. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Pickle.
Say Diane, too.
Or Pickle from now on. Um, uh, my, uh, Colin, Gwen Hughes, please. Gwen, what's your question?
Thanks, Libby. Hi, Dr. Austin.
Hey, Gwen, how are you?
I'm good. How are you? Thank you for doing this call, and, uh, I have, um, two almost second graders, um, at South, and, um, thank you also to Mary Eastwood, who's been really terrific. Um, I wanna thank you for all of the work that you have done in your team, and to see kind of the plans that you all put together is really terrific. Um, I also applaud you for prioritizing special needs kids, and, um, really am excited to see that as the priority for the plan. Um, so I'm a, I'm a working parent, um, full-time, and what I guess my question goes to is, I mean, I'm seeing a lot of parents, a lot of, uh, folks who are putting together plans to support kids in remote learning when they're not in person. And for those of us who are working full-time, I'm wondering what we can do creatively that isn't just, um, kind of a hodgepodge, let's make it up as we go along. But what you're thinking on this is, because, well, I'm really excited to see the full-time remote learning plan. For those of us with younger, you know, school-age kids, they can't do that by themselves. Um, so it's not a total solution, and I'd love to work with you on, uh, for those of us who are interested on how we can come up with some creative models for that, because my concern is, on the one hand, I think we should all be concerned about the fact that we're gonna end up with lots of kids in different pods um, who are being put together, um, separately from the school, um, just out of necessity. Obviously, we've got a lot of kids. I'm concerned about the kids who don't have resources, um, but I, I am glad, that's why I'm glad to see they're being prioritized. Um, but for those of us who are just kind of, you know, doing the working, um, thing, there, there is that issue, and I don't really see that fully addressed.
Yeah, Gwen, thank you, and, and I wish that I could tell you that I have a great solution for that today. Um, and we know that it's really difficult, and my heart goes out to you for trying to figure out how do we do this, particularly if we have to go to full remote again, um, and, and I, I get it. One of the things that I will say, and I may go promises of this, but, um, Nest Corenti and, um, Michelle, I think it's Nest, oh, it might be Carrie, I don't know which one of them, but Michelle Air, uh, and, and others have come to me, and we've talked about, talking with the town about finding really creative solutions for working parents in particular, um, whether it's a afternoon pod that we can help, um, support, looking for areas in the town that might happen. Again, I don't promise that, but we are, we are thinking about those things. Um, and, um, we're engaged now. We'll be talking with, um, the town administrator on that to see if there's any town space we can do, and is there any way to support that? You know, this is gonna have to be an effort. It's a Herculean effort for everybody, right? This is not just about you as a parent. It's not just about us as a, as a school system, but it's about all of the town supporting our students in a Herculean way. Um, we need to use all of our resources, and we need to be creative to support you as you work so that you can go back to work and feel confident that your children are getting what they need at school. So I don't have a solution yet, but I just wanna give you a little bit of hope that we have it on our radar, and we're looking at our solutions, and we're, we're looking for ways to be creative with the town on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd love to help on that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, one, two, three, four, five questions left, Dr. Austin. Okay, thank you. One, two, three, four, five questions left, Dr. Austin. Tiffany Mahoney is our last. It looks like Sarah Murphy may have dropped off. Really need to ask, but nobody else raised their hand at this point.
As long as I can still talk, I'll, let's, let's do it. Let's get it done.
Sound good. I'm going to call on Tukash for charge. Kirk Jones.
Hi. Can you guys see my video?
No, I can hear you. I can't see the video.
My computer's not working. But Paul, thank you very much for the presentation. I think you very well articulated the plan and, you know, it gives me a lot of hope and courage that, and, and encouragement that things are going to sort of be in the fall. Just two questions, or maybe one question that has two components. And I hope this is not controversial, but, you know, have you given any thought to, you know, the flu season coming up and then also, you know, introduction of a vaccine? And what, what would, how would that play out in with, with the kids coming into school? Would they be required to take the vaccine for the COVID-19 pandemic? Thank you.
Thank you. I, I lost some of that question, but I think your concerns around have we thought about the flu season, et cetera, is one. Absolutely, absolutely. I think we're all in for this incredible challenge for the year, year ahead. The more we can all work together now to try to, to get this at bay, the better off we're going to be. But I don't want to, I don't want to fool anybody and not think that this is going to be a, a real challenge for all of us. I suspect that me and my, and particularly my cabinet members at the central office are going to lose a lot of sleep and worry about what's going to happen in our schools. And so, so yes, we think about it. I kind of lost the rest of it, whether or not we can force people to have a flu vaccine. I don't believe we can force children to have a flu vaccine. There are vaccines that are required, but I don't believe we can enforce the flu vaccine. Is there anyone online that has, of my team, that's able to answer that better than I can? I'm not sure. I'm also from Massachusetts, so I apologize for that.
Well, my, my, my follow-up, when, when a COVID vaccine is out, would kids be required to, to take it to come back to school? So we just kind of think down, down the line. So, and if you don't have the answers, that's fine, but I just wanted, I'd like to just.
I don't have an answer for that right now. We'll, we'll look for guidance. And if they come up with a vaccine, I'll be very happy. But I don't have the guidance yet of what, what children would be required to do.
Okay, thank you. Priscilla Roser is next. Priscilla?
Hi, yes, actually, this is Jennifer Roser, and I'm at 17 President's Road. And thank you again for the presentation. I just had a quick question regarding, I, I think, as you noted, Dr. Austin, that there's a lot of uncertainty at this point about things are going to look in September. I think we're all feeling that way. And I, I guess my question is whether or not there's flexibility in terms of being able to start perhaps in remote? And if we feel good about how things are going, going toward a hybrid model ourselves as an individual family making that decision? Or starting with the hybrid and deciding that we think we're not comfortable with the way things are going and going toward remote only? Is there flexibility in terms of deciding this?
Yeah, the, the quick answer to that is yes. We will have to work through. It's easier for us if you start remote, I mean, start hybrid and then want to go remote. You can certainly do that. You have every flexibility for that. We're not going to force any student back into school that you don't feel safe to do so. So that's first. And if you start in remote and then you want to come back in, we're going to have to work a little bit of protocol because we're going to need some heads up on that and, and for planning. But we're hoping that it will be fairly seamless because you've been in the cohort either from home. If you've been home and, and remote and in the cohort, you should be able to come right back into the class and start. So, so the answer, the quick answer is we will be flexible with that and we will allow, and we'll be working with families to allow that to happen.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I really am going to ask that nobody else raised their hand at this point. I'm so sorry. We do have plenty of other, other opportunities for you to speak. And please email us or call me on the phone. I, I want to talk to people. Preston Moore, may I call on Preston Moore, please?
Kirsten Moore, 120 South Pleasant Street. Hi, Dr. Austin.
Hi again. How are you?
I am impressed with your fortitude. I am sure this has been an incredibly long day and I appreciate it very much, as I'm sure many others do. I just, after talking to a bunch of friends, I got voted in for another question. And that was with regards to some synchronous learning just basis. So if you're at home as a child and live streaming into a classroom, will they have the ability to ask questions in real time to their teachers?
You know, I, I'm going to, I'm going to go on a limb and say, I hope so. You know, and there's no perfect system. I think the teachers are going to have to work through that because that's going to be a very different platform for all of our teachers. I mean, I can think of in my PhD program, I actually did one classroom remote. And it used to drive me crazy because the professor was actually back to the screen that we were all on. And so we had, we raised our hand and 15 minutes later, we still didn't get called upon. And then I realized, oh, there's a hand, which we've lost the instruction by then. So it's not easy. You would hope that you'd be able to do it in live time. But that's part of the reason to getting the additional monitors. And we're also going to look at how we're going to support the teacher, whether that's a parer in the room or pairing up with somebody to be able to see that and, and be able to pay attention to the students at home so we can do that. So that's the quick answer that I would have for that. I hope it's, I hope it's enough for the day.
Part of that, my other one was regards to if we should have to go remote, so 100% remote back to that, if it was ordered. What will, because nothing has been described with regards to that. Do we know what it would look like? Would the teachers be live streaming to empty classrooms? Would this be, what kind of format would it take?
Yeah, I think that that's apt to be. That's one of the things that we're negotiating with, with the, with the union, actually. If we were remote, where is that going to be from? We do envision and we hope that, that there will be many people, even if we have to go remote, excuse me, that'll be working from their classroom. But that said, we also know if we're all remote, so is everyone else. We have teachers with children who also have to be home. We have to figure that out. So it could be from home. It could be from, from their classroom. But it will be live instruction, just like they were in the classroom, and it could be to an empty classroom.
Thank you. And lastly, on Wednesdays in elementary school, I didn't see a format as to what will happen on those days. Is that synchronous learning or is that just non-synchronous learning?
I believe it's synchronous. But Mary, are you on the line, Mary Eastwood? Or Beth Wilcox, one of you?
I am, yeah.
It's getting darker in your house. Beth Wilcox, I'll call on you.
Yes, so that would be a combination as well. So Wednesday would be a combination of the synchronous and asynchronous. So we would take a look at that schedule, but we do want to make sure that our students have connections on all of the school days.
And we're still working out a lot of details, as we said, once we know how many people are coming. Like we said, once we know who's coming to the party, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it all out.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd like to call on Sarah Bryant, please. Sarah?
Hi, this is actually her husband, Gates, with the question. So thank you, Dr. Austin, for the presentation.
You're on the screen.
Oh, yeah, we're on Hudson Lane.
Thank you.
And my question relates to the September 28th decision point. And I, I think in the slide presentation, it talked about evaluating it at that point. Can you just clarify the, the timing of the communication? And whether or not the September 28th is the day in which you will, will announce moving to phase two? Or if that's the day in which you will start phase two?
Yeah, thank you. It is our intent to start phase two then. We're going to be watching unless something happens the week before that doesn't allow us to do that. It is our intent to start phase two with that, on that day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Tiffany Mahoney, and this is the question that I had said would be last.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to end up with Tiffany Mahoney. Thank you all very much.
Hi, thank you so much for calling on me. First of all, oh my gosh, you guys are awesome. Dr. Austin, the principals, I can't. On behalf of my colleagues and I, like, the work you have done is above and beyond and we support you. So, so God bless you. Thank you so much. Just a couple of questions I have. I'm a resident in town, on the north side of town, and I also teach in town, the elementary level. And just curious, again, whatever it is, it is completely flexible. But we were curious if, if teachers with kids, perhaps on, on different schedules than us or with spouses who are back in a physical setting for work, if we would be able to bring our kids with us to work? Even if it's just, you know, sitting in the corner, whatever it needs to be, that's fine. And we were also curious if I had to call out sick either for myself, even not for one sick, just regular sick, or because my own children were sick. I'm worried about the availability of substitutes and getting a substitute. And if I call out sick, is it kind of just like automatically a remote day in that situation?
Thank you, Tiffany. And the first thing I'll say, thank you for your amazing energy. You have enough for me right now. I appreciate that. You know, I, I think the reality is, look, we're going to have to show an incredible amount of flexibility in the way that we're thinking, all right? And our, our job is not to make this hard for you. You guys are doing an amazing job. You're going to come into that classroom, I hope, and, and certainly deliver instruction and, and try to live through a difficult situation. In turn, I think it's fair that you see from us that we're flexible and try to work around those issues. I know that childcare is an issue. Can you bring your child in? That could be a possibility. That is one. Can guarantee it today. We'll, we'll, we'll think about that. But we've got to, we've got to have to be flexible. We're going to have to really think outside the box and not get into that concrete mud that I don't want to be in, all right? So I'll say that. The second, so what was the, I lost, was there a second question in there? I'm sorry.
Well, so if I call out sick either, either because of myself, not even like for one sick, just like, like, like fever or like threw up or, or, or my kids got sent home sick, so I had to leave, I'm worried about a substitute wanting to come and cover my class.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's just going to be a reality, Tiffany, that there are not a lot of substitutes. We're just putting in a new substitute system, which is electronic, and hopefully that's more efficient. But I think you're absolutely right. There are going to be a huge shortage with subs. It is going to be all hands on deck. And, and there's no doubt that we're going to have to use everyone at our disposal to be able to cover things to the rest of our ability. And that includes me. If I have to go help, we'll go help, you know, whatever. And I, and I said it to the other group, look, folks, I'm asking you to come into the classroom. I'm asking you to be courageous and you can guarantee that I will see you and I will be there beside you to do this and we'll figure it out together.
Okay, thank you so much.
Paul, can I just add to that too? Do you mind? Yeah, the, we were meeting the other day.
Hi, Mary.
We were meeting the other day and as you probably figure out, with every problem comes a new reaction or whatever. And we were talking about working our staff so that there are people assigned to certain grade levels so that we keep the, we keep the exposure down and we might be able to, to work all that out. So I, I wouldn't worry about that at this point. We'll take.
Thank you guys. Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome, Tiffany. And I know, Libby, you're going to end the meeting in a minute. Can I just do a real quick statement? You mind? I just want to thank all of you and how amazing you as parents, our faculty, our staff today for being online, our school committee, our central office folks, Jamie, Suzanne, Susan. Thank you so much for your incredible work that you've done. This is not, this is not an easy task for everyone, for anyone. Folks have worked incredibly long hours. I'm impressed. We, we've had 1,500 people here today and it's been a civil, actually enjoyable experience. I wasn't sure at the beginning of the day. But we, we certainly have made this a good day and I'm proud to be in Hingham today. I'm proud of our faculty, our staff and my cabinet. I'm proud of all of you. And I'm proud of the school committee for your commitment to the town of Hingham. So thank you all for an incredible day. And, and thank you, Jamie, in particular, who's worked really hard at trying to get that final plan ready to go out to you in draft form, I will say again, tonight. And thank you for all your hard work. So thank you. Thanks for everyone.
A big round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Austin. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can't go anywhere because we got to do a couple of, we got to close down the meeting, so.
Thank you very much, Dr. Austin.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sorry, Libby.
Everybody, keep saying it. I, I would, I hate to call this meeting adjourned, but I have to do so at 8:26. We have a motion, please, to call the subcommittee to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn this, whatever committee this is, as adjourned.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, thank you. And Carrie, me?
I'll take a motion to adjourn the full school committee.
So moved.
Thank you, Michelle, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Libby. Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos? Give us a pop, Doc. Libby?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.